Right now, volleyball. There's something happening in the cafeteria as well. I just had some boy.
Just a four of us today?
What is your answer?
David, how you doing? Karen?
Hi.
Bodyguard.
Oh, yeah, he trashed me. Yeah. The worst thing was Wednesday. I'm still hurting. We just were alike, alright?
I'd like to call the order and welcome you to the Hampton Wilbraham Regional School District's school committee meeting. It is 6:30 PM. I see that David Sanders from Wilbraham Public Access Channel is recording. Is there anyone else here reporting this meeting? Okay, we will do roll call in a medical order. Cheryl, Karen Warner?
Here.
Tim Collins?
Here.
Sean Kennedy?
Here.
Lisa Murray? Rich Beckher? Mike Turbasi? Michelle Boudreaux? Here. If you please stand. Cheryl, please.
I'd like to do this through the pride of the United States of America and to give you a relative recognition of my nation under God, the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment to congratulate our high school principal, Dr. Steve Hale, on successfully defending his dissertation on school committee perceptions of superintendence and earning his doctorate. We're proud to have such a dedicated and passionate leader guiding the Minnetoka community. His commitment and continuous growth, both personally and professionally, sets a powerful example for all of us. Congratulations on this remarkable accomplishment, Dr. Hale.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike. You just let everyone know you're here.
Okay.
Okay, so we, well, it looks like we do not have student representatives at this time?
They might be at the soccer game.
I thought, Elena, we do have, um, so, yes, maybe.
Okay, well, we can circle back if they arrive a little bit later. So, we'll continue with new business. We have the e-bike safety discussion. So, Mike?
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, how are you?
I have a question. If, um, you know, I get to report from our district hospital this summer, we saw remarkable increases in areas of on the e-bikes. I think that there's a perfect storm of decrease in cost, increase in power, and if they let us play to have this way caught up with the rules of these kinds of, um, so I think that if we need any policy or anything in regards to that, I kind of want to break down for you to discuss the kind of increase awareness and security for a question happening with these bikes. The only laws that seem to be applicable are that if any of these devices aren't capable of going over 20 miles an hour, they're actually supposed to be registered as a motorbike, um, which means the operator, such as the 17, is also required to have, um, some form of driving permit for it to register. And any of the batteries do go over 20 miles an hour, but it's not, they're not clearly labeled right out of that hat. Um, so, I mean, just in the interest of the, of the safety of students, everyone around of that, you know, we kind of, I guess, um, increase preparedness to ensure that what's been going on with the e-bikes is not getting there. They aren't supposed to be off the normal track laws, they're not allowed to be on the sidewalks, um, so, I don't know if anyone else has any, probably their personal observations I'd like to make.
I do know that both police departments in each of the towns have been more diligent about stopping riders and making sure that they're obeying, um, you know, the law. And they've just been cracking down in general.
If I can age myself here a little bit, back in the day, um, when I was in school, they came up with mopeds, um, and that was the big thing where my father brought us a moped and we were driving around town, of course, without a helmet because, you know, we only wore helmets in hockey. Um, but, uh, yeah, my son, whenever he sees the e-bikes, his first comment is, uh, "Oh my gosh, that person's not wearing a helmet, why aren't they wearing a helmet, what are they insane?" So, at least I think education is in order. Um, I think kids pretty much understand a lot more than we give them the credit for, but, uh, you know, if we want to support some education, that would be great. You're not, you're not opposing, like, banning them or anything, are you, Mike?
No, no, I, we kind of wanted to just raise the marriage really, and if you're good with bringing up the helmet, Sean, that, that, you know, anyone under 17 is required to wear a helmet, um, a bike, a bike, or any bike, any kind of, by law. I think it's also important to acknowledge that if the vehicle is able to go over 20 miles an hour, um, unfortunately, it's standard by county, maybe, um, quite insufficient protection against impact, and actually, more, how this were raised from motorcycles and our recommendations, um, but, but you also perhaps, a lot of children are observed not wearing helmets at all, I think, e-bikes. It really puts, our police are working really hard, it puts us in a very difficult position because the current laws only make us know what the velocity of the vehicle is capable of, which is difficult to tell by just looking at the bike or just looking at the neighborhood of the bike, particularly, um, that, you know, um, when they come out, um, kind of they come out with, um, they're very physically modified to have a significant increase in the initial velocity that they don't have, um, which, I think, sometimes is a danger you are in danger. So, really, it's a difficult challenge for our police because it can be hardly even identified with the vehicle to the 10 over 20, unless they're actually, like, off the radar, kind of, go over 20, and then they would need some power to, you know, tell them that it needs to be registered, that they need to have an operator permit.
I think it's important to make the distinction that there's a difference between the e-bikes and the e-dirt bikes.
Do we know if the DMV includes questions under written tests relative to these kind of vehicles? And does the DMV require a road test for students who want to have a licensed e-bike and rider on the streets? Do they have a road test for them? Do we know that?
If this device is able to go over 20 miles per hour, then they're less than 18, and they already have driver's license through, like, 17, they are required to have a permit operating, but what I don't really answer to is if that permit requires physical driving test, e-bike, like, motorcycle, I presume that it does, but I have no chance to that question.
Mike, have you, um, thank you, have you, uh, been aware of any push, um, the state to do, um, basic updates to our, um, policies and include what our policies would be of that?
So, I haven't heard anything in regards to changes to the policy, usually this whole school policy changes would happen in response to the laws that are passed and then recommendations from the head of state. Um, I have heard that the legislators are looking at changes to the current existing laws, but I haven't heard of anything specifically, um, being passed, uh, yet.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, John, do you think that it might be worthy of having a conversation with Chief Lennon and, um, what's the new chief in Hampton? Michelle?
I think.
Oh, he has not begun yet.
He has not begun yet, okay. And then when, when the new chief in Hampton comes and, and maybe do something like, uh, offer some kind of safety program or certification or something like that, just for kids, you know, if their parents, you know, have their kids and they want to get the e-bikes, that maybe, you know, having some kind of safety program certification that they can go through. Um, at this point, education is what we're all about, I think we should focus on, you know, maybe educating the kids. Um, what do you think about that, John?
My thought would be to put it on the next safety wellness emergency action team meeting. The person who creates the agenda for those meetings is seated immediately, as Mike writes. And so, so, and the police department does participate with us on that, so my thought would be to read up in that context and see if we can collaborate with our, um, the police department or other appropriate agencies to offer some training for kids.
I, I can speak for Hampton, so I know there's been a lot of information that has been disseminated regularly, um, since last spring regarding the e-bikes. So, they do enforce the following regarding e-bikes, um, but they're not for legal use on public ways, operation on public property not designated for recreational vehicle use is prohibited, a DOT apritament must be worn, and under Master General Law Chapter 90E, which is the recreational, um, vehicle enforcement, and Master General Law Chapter 90, enforcement on public ways, action may be taken. Um, parents get, are also subject to enforcement action for allowing their children to operate an e-dirt bike in violation of the law. So, I can speak to the fact that, you know, regular posts, regular education, um, is coming from the police department. They do speak to the riders, which is great because it's really important that, number one, for relationship purposes, but also to provide that education because maybe, right, so when you've got an e-bike or an e-dirt bike, maybe they don't know the law, they don't understand, you know, the ramifications or, or what the laws are, and they are educating the riders and sharing the information. But it is important to, to make sure that everybody has the information, but just know that the police departments are being very active in, um, sharing the information and making sure that they're, um, providing education, uh, education around safety.
Uh, just to think of another aspect of this, and another reason why it would be good, should I think, address this at the safety team, is that we have fire personnel there as well, and my understanding is that it's very important to charge the batteries properly or there can be thermal events, so it would be good to attack it from that angle as well.
Yeah, almost like a driver's ed for your bikes, you know, some kind of program certi-, I, I like the idea of a certification. Did you go through the program? Yes, did you pass? Great, you know, and, and that's something that can carry pride, I guess.
I like, I like your plans for the education on that job. Um, we're also starting, um, we work with the, uh, we have injury prevention, um, department that they, they showed us also, that, uh, our girls who's in charge of that, I, uh, who you had come by, sorry, now, I, 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 I mean, you have come by, you know, the, um, top education with, uh, staff members and so forth, um, is working with researchers that need to kind of, um, increase, and kind of, I, that's focused this year is the on the bike, certain re-protection, and, um, it looks like they have separated out, so we've been working together.
Thank you. Um, Jen, Jen, who's our supervisor, is also a part of that team, maybe we can have her reach out to your colleague and see if she can be a part of that discussion.
Okay.
Good evening. Okay, so we'll continue with the restructuring of student services department. Josh?
Good evening. Uh, within your packet, you have a memorial requesting to restructure the vacant educational team leader position to supervisor of student services specialized program, uh, specialized programs role, and a proposed job description for that position as well. The supervisor of student services would serve as the primary administrative contact and case manager for students who are enrolled in HWRSD and who participate in our district's specialized or substantially separate programs, preschool through age 22. This request is a result of multiple factors, most importantly of which is the results of my entry plan findings from last year, which noted that the current grade span model results in multiple geographical and programmatic transitions for students and families, which leads to programmatic inconsistencies, loss of case knowledge, as well as the need for families to establish new relationships with at least five ETLs over the course of their student's educational career. The establishment of this position would mitigate these concerns, allowing families to have a single point of contact throughout their child's educational journey, who is able to hold the individual student in case knowledge, ease the transition of both students and families as they move from school to school, and would provide additional supports to faculty and staff as the supervisor's role is designed to ensure horizontal and vertical alignment of our specialized programs. The role would ensure that our specialized programs receive ongoing coaching and support that both paraprofessionals and special education faculty would receive, and to ensure that the professional development that they need in order to improve student outcomes is provided. The need for additional support is even more pressing, given the, given that our specialized programs are currently staffed by a significant number of contracted staff, which require increased logistical oversight. It's my recommendation that this position be a year-round position in order to support faculty, staff, and students during extended school year services, which operate in both July and early August, as well as to assist building principals, families, and myself in ensuring a smooth transition for students as they move from year to year and building to building. As noted in the proposed job description, this role will be responsible for supervising the development, implementation, coordination, and evaluation of our district's specialized programs. The supervisor will work continuously to improve our specialized programs to support students within their home schools and to monitor students who may be developmentally ready to move to a less restrictive setting. The supervisor would also support building and district administrators with recruitment, screening, and hiring of special education faculty and staff to support our most vulnerable learners. The establishment of this position would result in redistribution of current caseloads for our education team leaders, as the supervisor would take on approximately 70 students on their caseload. As part of this redistribution, case management for our out-of-district students would transfer to me as well. This is in part due to increased monitoring requirements instituted by DESI this summer. Specifically, the requirements include the need for school staff to evaluate and certify that the students attending out-of-district programs are receiving education that meets curriculum frameworks, the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, that they meet local competency determination requirements, and that they, the services they receive are provided and delivered in a manner that provides them a free and appropriate public education. These increased requirements are both a focus of state and federal oversight moving forward. In preparing to make this recommendation to the committee, I did meet with the ETLs during our weekly meeting to seek feedback and to ensure that they would be comfortable with me moving forward with this request. They were supportive and felt that the addition of a supervisor would be beneficial to faculty, staff, families, and most importantly, our students. Additionally, I met with the president of the Hampton Wilbraham Education Association, who did not know any issues with moving forward with the request. While HWA was not in a position to endorse the addition of another administrative position, they did note that the benefits to both our students and families that the increased consistency would provide would be helpful. My hope is that you'll approve my request this evening so that we can move forward with posting the vacancy and to search for a candidate. Thank you.
Move for approval?
Um, I have a question before we, uh, go forward with approval. Um, what is the impact on the budget of the addition of this position?
So, the current, uh, position has been vacant since the beginning of the school year, so we have savings from that that would be able to cover, hopefully, the remainder of this school year. And then the plan is to move forward with using a small portion of our circuit breaker reimbursement, um, moving forward to make up the difference between the budgeted amount for the ETL position and the salary of the candidate.
Okay, so with the addition, with the addition of the supervisor position, the economy, the current vacant position will be eliminated?
Correct.
Okay.
So, can you explain to me?
I'm second to move into.
All right, I, I just.
Question to the session?
Huh?
I said question to the session.
There you go. So, um, so we're giving up an, uh, an education team leader for this position. Why give up that? I mean, isn't that going to just spread the course load over more, you know, fewer people? They're going to have more of a course load, uh, caseload, excuse me?
So, the cases, actually, for the ETLs are going to be smaller for two reasons. One, the out-of-district students are going to fall under me, and the supervisor position would take 70, we have approximately 70 students in specialized programs from pre-K through age 22, so that, those, that are currently managed by ETL. So, those cases would move to the supervisor position, so it would actually lessen the responsibility of the remaining ETL moving forward, but allow one person to sort of support those students and families through their whole career in the district, as opposed to having to move after two years, both schools and, um, to different ETL positions.
Okay, I understand. So, what you're saying is that they, they have different support in each building, and this person would be the one that would just maintain that support straight through?
Correct.
And then you'd be taking on more responsibility as well?
So, in some ways, some of the responsibilities would shift to the supervisor. I would take on the out-of-district caseloads, but I'm involved in many of those meetings anyway, and so having two staff members, both myself and an ETL at those meetings, doesn't always feel like the best use of resources when they could be supporting other students and faculty. And our goal is consistently to move students from out-of-district placements back into the district when they are ready, which we've been able to successfully do this year, which is actually very exciting. Um, and that feels really challenging to ask, uh, ETL to do and to make that decision, and so typically, those students are managed or supervised by the directors in other districts.
So, where I was going with that is, can we afford to lose an ETL? Would this be in addition to, you know, or, or you feel comfortable that if we, we take that ETL and bump it up into this new role, and that would be fine, we're not going to lose out anywhere else?
I think that would be okay.
All right, remember, we have a, as much responsibility for those among us that need that extra help as we do for our peer students. All right, and I support it.
I have a question about the recruit. Um, do you currently do outreach to education, education preparation programs, both undergraduate and graduate? And if you do, is part of that outreach letting them know the benefits that they get offered if they're working here in Wilbraham, and an estimation of their lifetime earnings, which, when compared to surrounding districts, would look, make us look like a good place that people might want to be working?
So, we do outreach to local educational institutions, um, for candidates who may be interested in joining. It certainly is something that I think I could, we could strengthen in terms of, I don't personally express sort of what their lifetime earnings could be, for example, but we do communicate about vacancies. Um, and myself and two other district administrat-, three other district administrators are going to a job fair at the elements in November, um, for that exact purpose, actually, to sort of take or grab candidates directly from the schools with which they attend, rather than trying to capture them after they graduate.
What will be, um, your entrance, uh, entrance into educating the parents of these children and adults in the program?
In terms of, about the shift?
Yeah.
Um, so, I shared with our CPAC, Karen Ramona was here this evening, uh, that we, I would be making a recommendation to make this shift, and then I would share this information, if we were successful, um, in having this approved, I would share this information with our families, that it would be upcoming, as well as our, all of our faculty and staff in the student services department.
Can I ask, uh, do you have a question?
Sure.
Um, have you gotten, um, good feedback so far from, um, speaking about this change?
Do you want me to introduce myself, Michelle? Okay. Um, I'm Karen Ramona, uh, and I am a member of the CPAC for the Hampton Wilbraham Regional School District. Um, so, so far, it really has only been shared amongst CPAC, um, and the response at this point is very positive. Um, so, I think that, um, those of us on CPAC that have had an opportunity to, um, hear about Josh's proposal are on board. Um, I think anecdotally, I have a child in a substantially separate program in district, um, and I personally think that this is a very positive move. Um, I, I think that it will serve the students in those programs better than what we're currently doing. Um, so, I, I personally think it's a positive move from CPAC's perspective, I think CPAC sees it as a positive move, um, and I think that the parents in general will see it that way. I, I don't really see, um, a negative at this point.
As, as a parent of, uh, three special educators, uh, education students, um, parents get nervous when they don't understand, and their children or, or even young adults are struggling on how to, um, learn a new system, basically.
I, I think, um, and Josh and I have not had, uh, conversation at length about this as of yet, but I, um, I think that when the communication goes out to the families, that I'm hopeful that maybe that could be a joint communication between, um, Josh and CPAC, um, and so that we can work together on, um, putting together a communication that will hopefully alleviate, um, any concern that the families have that this may somehow disrupt or change the way that services are being provided or how communication is taking place. So, I think that tends to be one of the biggest issues, is anytime there's a change in, um, you know, sort of, uh, who's providing the services, it's, it's, now it becomes, okay, so who do I communicate with? Who am I getting communication from? And who do I reach out to if there's a problem? So, I think that as long as we're cognizant of that, and that that is a big part of the communication piece that goes out, whatever we, you know, what, whatever we use in order to, um, reach out to the parents, I think if we're open and
Do you want me to introduce myself, Michelle?
Sure.
Okay. I'm Karen Ramona, and I am a member of the CPAC for the Hampton Wilbraham Regional School District. So, so far, it really has only been shared amongst CPAC, and the response at this point is very positive. So I think that those of us on CPAC that have had an opportunity to hear about Josh's proposal are on board. I think anecdotally, I have a child in a substantially separate program in district, and I personally think that this is a very positive move. I, I think that it will serve the students in those programs better than what we're currently doing. So I, I personally think it's a positive move from CPAC's perspective. I think CPAC sees it as a positive move, and I think that the parents in general will see it that way. I, I don't really see a negative at this point.
As, as a parent of three special educators, education students, parents get nervous when they don't understand and their children or even young adults are struggling on how to learn a new system, basically.
I, I think, and Josh and I have not had a conversation at length about this as of yet, but I, I think that when the communication goes out to the families, that I'm hopeful that maybe that could be a joint communication between Josh and CPAC, and so that we can work together on putting together a communication that will hopefully alleviate any concern that the families have that this may somehow disrupt or change the way that services are being provided or how communication is taking place. So I think that tends to be one of the biggest issues is anytime there's a change in, you know, sort of who's providing the services, it's, now it becomes, okay, so who do I communicate with? Who am I getting communication from and who do I reach out to if there's a problem? So I think that as long as we're cognizant of that and that that is a big part of the communication piece that goes out, whatever we, you know, whatever we use in order to reach out to the parents, I think if we're open and transparent about that, I think it will alleviate any concerns that anyone has.
Great, great, thank you. Thanks.
One more quick question. It's not mentioned anywhere, anywhere here, but the compensation that we're going to offer for this, is it going to be aggressive enough for us to get the candidate? Because I mean, this, this definition, I mean, it's, it's very in-depth, very detailed. Are we going to find such a candidate and are we going to be able to afford such a candidate?
So the short answer to that question is we won't know until we post it and we see who applies. I have talked to Dr. Provost and Dr. Swaller about what the potential range may be and being mindful of both trying to secure the candidate with whom we want and also being mindful of the larger budget in general. I do think it is helpful that because the ETL position has been vacant both all of this year thus far, and we reported we already have that base salary, that that could be a benefit of not needing to find a full salary. The other piece is that while the position will be year-round, sometimes one of the factors that's helpful in making a salary more competitive are the benefits. And so the number of workdays can sometimes make a significant difference for a candidate and a decrease in salary with a smaller number of workdays could be a potential option.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, since we do have some via remote, we'll do a roll call vote. Cheryl? Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Mike?
Yeah.
And myself? Yes, someone who carries five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, I will turn it over to John. We have this field trip that's happening. John?
Yes, and this is a basically repeat of the field trip that you approved for last year. As you know, we have formed a partnership with a school in Spain where students basically have the opportunity to spend time taking classes with students from the school and taking day trips to different parts of the country. You had a presentation on this a few months ago. The request is to repeat that trip in 2027.
I make a motion to accept the field trip request to Spain.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, so we'll do roll call. Cheryl?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
And myself? I, motion very five, zero. We'll continue with the Cirque du Soleil field trip.
As you may remember, Principal DeRosa spoke to the committee about wanting to think about a different approach to field trips at the middle school and have more accessible, both in terms of physical accessibility, but also economical accessibility for families than the current one big trip to Washington DC. So this is a part of that plan. This would be a trip to Cirque du Soleil. It's on your agenda because you'd be going to Connecticut. I'm sorry for that.
I just want to bring the point, I believe I saw this program two years ago, and for the next two weeks, I just kept saying random wows. I couldn't believe some of the things I saw. It was impactful. It was entertaining. It was just amazing, and I wholeheartedly stand by it. So I make a motion to accept the Cirque du Soleil Dreams Holidays program in December 19th of this year.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Okay, roll call. Cheryl?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Mike?
Yeah.
And myself? I, motion very five, zero. And we'll continue with the Newport Mansions field trip.
Yes, another trip to Rhode Island. This is to view the Newport Mansions in connection to the Gilded Age curriculum at the high school, again, it's an out-of-state field trip, so it requires your approval.
I make a motion to support the Newport Mansion field trip.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Cheryl?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes. Sean?
Aye.
Yeah.
And myself? I, motion very five, zero. And so we'll continue with Assistant Superintendent for Finance Operations and Human Resources.
Good evening. Can you pack it up this time that the last time was a lovely report from me regarding the status of the budget? The main thing I pointed out, and the change I made to the, to the sort of spreadsheet aspect of this was to add two columns that indicate the percentage of actual budget spent and the percentage of actual budget encumbered and spent. So I think both those give some indication of how the budget is progressing through the course of fiscal year. In general, a short story is the budget's fine at present. We're basically through one quarter of the year. We're in okay shape. We're, you know, our commitments of resources, which is the combination of actual spending and encumbrances, are in fine shape, actually, a little less than we sometimes are at this point in the year. But our actual spending to date, actual cash out the door is a little higher, but not surprisingly, given the kinds of, of things we are purchasing at the beginning of the year. So I think we're in good shape budget-wise, so that's a short story. Longer though, it's just, you know, I'll probably continue to keep those two percentage columns on the, on the report for you as we go month to month, so you can kind of see how the budget's progressing as a percentage pull. Sometimes just having the raw numbers on there, it's difficult to judge how, you know, aggressively or passively we're, we're spending our budget. And so I'm hopeful that that'll be additionally helpful to you as you evaluate how our budget's progressing and, you know, different questions from you as we go through the year as to what the status of things are. And so I'm hopeful that that's helpful to you all. And I'm happy answering any questions people have about what, what they're seeing on that report.
My question is, are we confident that the district by technology, which is in red right now, but we're awaiting the state reimbursement, are we confident that the reimbursement is going to cover that $190,067?
Yeah, the, the 190 is actually a combination of both. So there's an earmark in the budget. I literally this week submitted the paperwork, it's electronic, to get that reimbursement of $92,500. So we'll, you know, it'll widen its way through the approval process and we'll get that money back. The other chunk of money is actually capital money that we were requesting from the committee, so we'll be able to do that. We'll have to do some billing with them. The fortunate thing with those, those projects was that E-Rate was able to support the projects, and so the actual amount we asked for from the towns and what we really needed is less. So we'll, we'll have some capacity there that either we'll be able, most likely be able to get back to the towns because of the way that the capital projects get approved in very specific language and specific use, but we should have the resources for, for both those to cover that, that deficit that's showing right now.
Thank you. Can you go to 9,300? That it seems we have over a million dollars of overspent. Could you talk to us a little bit about that, please?
Can you find it? I think, I can guess it from it, but let me find the exact line here. Yeah, I think I, there's a note, I believe, that says that we've got circuit breaker funds to support that.
Says some encumbrances to be shifted to circuit breaker funds, but that's, we're talking $1.18 million. That's very significant.
Yeah, so we have, in total, for circuit breaker, we have almost, we have a little over $1.4 million of circuit breaker available to us. So, you know, this is, you know, these are projected, you know, as an encumbrance is projected spending we're going to make, and, you know, we fully expect it to spend, you know, most of that circuit breaker funding for that purpose. And, and, you know, 1.1 holds out to be true. 1.4 is the number. We've got 300,000 of circuit breaker remaining to do things like, you know, fund the position you just talked about, but we should be in good shape with regard to that. We just haven't made that, that financial transaction yet, and we haven't incurred those expenses yet, which is also why. So they sort of sit on the general fund in, in the short term, and then as the actual bills come in, we can then transition them over and sort of see that reduce over time.
My issue, I, I understand we have the funds and stuff, but my issue is, was this a mistake for a million dollars that we didn't budget for?
No, no, not at all. No, it's anticipated fully.
Then why is it in red as saying that we're overspending?
Because we've encumbered general funds for it. We have not yet done the accounting to shift that to the funds for circuit breaker.
You had it budgeted for the circuit breaker funds and you just haven't, you're taking it out of general funds now.
Right, so in the short term, we, we just charge it to a different fund to get started, and then we'll switch the fund later.
If memory serves, the current budget is based on $1.3 million in circuit breaker. So that, that was anticipated in the budget that passed.
Okay, thank you.
So if you're ready, I'll move on to the hiring update. And so I'll be transparent here in saying, this is a little bit of an opportunity to brag on staff. And I mentioned in particular the HR payroll staff, but I also want to, you know, you know, provide some, some, you know, some appreciation to building staff, principals, the clerical support staff, all the people that serve on, on all these interview committees to navigate the process of hiring people. And so just appreciate the work that goes into the early part of the year and getting people hired. We've been pretty successful in filling a lot of positions, which is encouraging. Even, you know, even if some of those hires are, are short-term in, in, you know, sort of leave replacement type hires, that sort of thing, we've had a lot of success even in those circumstances. So I wanted to just make you aware that that happens and the, and the volume that it entails. When you think about 90 people coming in as, as employees, that means every single one of those people filled out a W-4 and an M-4 and an I-9 and potentially filled out retirement paperwork for MTRS or Hampton County Retirement or OBR, et cetera, et cetera. So it is a pretty substantial amount of work that people do to do that and at a number of different levels and so on. I just bring that to your attention and the public's attention and appreciate the work and effort that people make, you know, in service of our students with regard to being just a good, high-qualified staff in our, in our district. The second thing is that, you know, we are still shorthanded a little bit. We've got a few spots. I, I picked out a few. There are some other openings around the district. There's some transitions for retirees coming up in some areas like Stony Hill and, and other areas of our, of our staffing. But these particular ones that I listed here are ones that, you know, tend to be a little more persistently challenging to, to fill. And so I do want to make you aware of that. And, and some of these, and I had a brief conversation with, with Mr. Dixon the other day about, about do we, for something like a BCBA, which is such a challenging position to fill, do we just shift and not have this position and just book contracted services in our budget? You know, we'd rather hire a BCBA, but it's just such a challenging employment market for districts to, to compete and, and get staff in that regard. So that's a philosophical question. It's a circuit breaker budget over the next few weeks. We'll, we'll grapple with and, and either retain them as, as openings and positions we're trying to fill or, or shift them into contracted services. But we'll, and we know of one of the budgets, so we'll have that sort of teed out for you. You'll notice there's some other special education positions there. Some are, are a result of some people, you know, taking on some new roles. So the paraprofessional position C is because we're trying to move that person to another role as a, as a special education teacher. So we have some internal promotion processes that happen that create some of these things. And then the last one on the list is, is a position we talked about when we were worried about some federal funding. And, and it is, it's still a challenging position to fill as far as that instructional coach, but I think, you know, it's also a timing thing. So I think we'll, we'll probably try and start to, to this curtain about that and hopefully, you know, we might be able to find somebody at, at the sort of semester to help the second half of the year. But I did want to make you aware of those kind of persistent challenges we have in, in our, in our hiring process, but also give an opportunity to kind of thank the people that do the, in any degree of getting people hired and the volume that they deal with.
Yeah, here, here. That was my question when it said one FTE paraprofessional at Stony Hill. I didn't know quite how to read this. It says this opening is to replace the candidate who will serve as the SE teacher at Stony Hill. So it's a paraprofessional that is moving up? Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
That's great. That's great news. Good, thank you.
And you may have, you know, I was, we were just talking about this right before meeting. There may be other opportunities, you know, to, to fill positions by sort of growing from within. It's sort of the shortest step, some ways we can try to support our staff in, in getting to a place where they can be waived or get a license, you know, whether it be support around until exams, having to finish their degree, that kind of thing. Those are all part and parcel of things we're thinking about to help pipeline of, of staff into the, into the district. Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. It's now time for a public comment. It's for anyone here that is interested in making a public comment this evening. If you could, please come to the front and just make sure the green flag is on. If you could just please state your name and your association with the district. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you.
My name is Megan Farr. I am both a Wilbraham resident as well as an employee of the district. So I am currently a math instructional coach supporting Stony Hill and Sularus Schools. I'm also a unit A staff member. I'm also currently pregnant with my third child. I've been employed by HWST since the fall of 2012, which means I've had time to bank quite a few sick days. I had the luxury of using this bank sick time to take my first two maternity leaves. At 12 weeks each, I used 60 days, 60 days for each of my leaves or 120 of the sick days I received since joining HWST. Because I'm also taking time off for illness, on average of less than four days a year over the 14 years that I've worked here, all of the appointments that come with pregnancy, I will only have the sick time to support five weeks of paid maternity leave this time. In the unit A salary scale, I currently hold a master's degree with 45 additional credits, and I'm at step 16. This puts my annual salary at $92,716.12. When you're forced to take an unpaid leave, the district calculates your daily rate. Because we work 185 contracted days, my $92 salary brings my daily rate to $501 a day. To take 35 days or seven weeks of unpaid maternity leave will cost my family $17,535, and I'm considered fortunate that part of my leave will be paid. To take a full 12-week unpaid maternity leave would cost my family $30,060. Studies show that less than eight weeks of paid leave is linked to a reduction of overall health status for both the mother and the infant, as well as an increased risk of postpartum depression. At eight weeks postpartum, a woman is still physically healing from childbirth, healing from any surgical wounds, experiencing bleeding and waking every two or three hours to feed her newborn. The risk of complications is significantly elevated. Most Massachusetts employees are covered by the Massachusetts Paid Family Medical Leave Act, allowing them to take 12 weeks of paid parental leave. However, because the law does not require municipalities and districts to participate, HWST employees are ineligible. I am urging the members of our school committee to value its employees and support proposal for paid parental leave. The amount of money that it costs HWST employees to take parental leave is staggering, and we have the opportunity through the current contract negotiations to do right by them, and I encourage you to see that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that's interested in making a public comment this evening? Thank you very much. We will continue with subcommittee updates. Lisa, not here from the curriculum subcommittee. You've not met.
We're bored.
Perfect. Planning Committee, just, we were born to do a quick regional agreement update.
Sure. The planning committee is scheduled to meet on October 29th. As you recall from our last school committee meeting, there was an agreement, I believe, for towns to continue discussion on the issue of the middle school, which is the sole remaining issue that I think we need to resolve before we are able to finalize language. Have had some communications with some members of that, of that committee, just asking questions about what might be done within the context of different options for the middle school. So I think that's a positive as well. As I said at the last school committee meeting, whenever all of the three elected boards feel comfortable about language, then we will need to advise the attorneys for the three elected boards that we have an agreement in principle and allow them to work on the details of the language. I imagine that process would take about a month. And then we need to send that language to the Department of Education for their legal review. They've advised us that takes about two weeks. So, you know, I think we're, we'll need to keep moving aggressively to try to get this on the agenda for spring town meetings. You know, this, as we've learned through the process, it is not a sprint, it's a marathon, and we need to keep going because the deadlines creep up on you really quickly.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. And we want to define its operations and technology subcommittee?
Yeah, I wanted to, I'll be calling you or Aaron set up a meeting for us to Yeah, I wanted to, I'll be calling you or Aaron set up a meeting for us to have a setup meeting and to start planning what we want to do. There would just be HW RSD members at that meeting so we can talk about how we want to approach it, what meetings we want to do, how we want to do it. And then after we pick the chair and stuff like that, we'll move on from there.
Okay, great. So we will continue with the LPVAC collaborative representative. Lisa's not here this evening.
One quick one. Is the planning committee is meeting next?
October twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
It's Wednesday, five thirty, district conference room. So we look at the negotiation subcommittee. There's nothing to report at this time. So we'll continue with the policy subcommittee.
Yes, we have the first meeting of several policies. A lot of these are tied together and coupled under three policies per district. IDAE, competency determination. And IJA, graduation requirements, these do kind of go together and they're helping up bill chat from the MTS requirement to have a new state regulation. GDE, DCC, J2, solicitation plan stuff. JDP, student progress activities. KBE, relationships with parent groups or organizations. EPSC, access to building to ground. EFC, school supervision, field qualification. KBT, current design re-counsel pack. This next one, we're treating like a policy, is going to end up being an addition to the book. It doesn't have a letter designation, the middle school career pathway exploration. EMD, civil rights, district policy for child supervision program. EMD-R, civil rights displaced procedures. HSR, school supervision department.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Thank you. Mike, do you have anything to report on the LPVAC corporation level?
No, nothing to report. I think the last meeting I reported from our meeting and we're probably not going to be meeting again for several months.
Okay, thank you. So we will continue with the superintendent's, oh, no, we don't have anything for the superintendent of the negotiation. We'll continue with the content agenda. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, so we'll do a roll call. Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Hi.
Mike?
Yeah.
And myself, I, Russian Kari's back zero. And so we will continue with the superintendent's update.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to present the two thousand and twenty-five accountability report. There's much good news to share tonight, including the newly graduated Dr. Hale, whose dissertation was about school committee perceptions of superintendents. And if I heard him right, one of the things he said was that school committees value superintendents who know how to provide accountability and talk about accountability and superintendents who guide the district and really caring for and value for, valuing every single child. So I'm here to do both of those tonight. I'll start, as always, with information about teacher quality because a school district can only be as strong as its teacher workforce. Here you see teachers and family members from the last spring's Grin Spoon Excellence in Teaching Award night. We also had an opportunity earlier this week to see one of our teachers honored by the Commissioner and Secretary of Education. I don't think the official press release on that has come out yet, so I'm not at liberty to say who, but I'll be reporting on that next month. So we do have, as you can see, a number of very skilled and highly qualified and highly effective educators in the district. We have some data to back that up. This next slide showcases our district's commitment to high standards in its teaching staff. Compared to the Massachusetts State Average, HW RSD maintains a remarkably low percentage of teachers rated as needs improvement or unsatisfactory, hardly any. And as fewer teachers teaching outside their fields of expertise, which is always difficult because it means when you're teaching outside your field of expertise, you're not exactly having the same level of training as someone who is within their field of expertise. And we also have significantly smaller number of teachers with zero to two years of experience. This interval is chosen by the state, I believe, because there's a lot of research saying that sort of hit your stride as a teacher in the third year. The first two years are a very difficult growth curve for most educators. So to the extent that you can manage your workforce so that the proportion of teachers at zero to two years of experience is modest, the more effective your overall teaching workforce is. So these metrics speak to the quality of our educational staff who set the foundation for student success. Now talking about quantity of staff. As in the past years, the district maintains a slightly higher student to teacher and slightly lower student to paraprofessional ratio as compared to the state average, demonstrating that our district continues to direct relatively greater than average resources to support personnel and relatively less than average resources to licensed staff. This is a choice that, you know, personally, I struggle with, but it is one that the district has consistently made over a number of years. Next, I'll turn to school climate. Learning is a social process and the social field created in the school needs to be positive for students to reach their full potential. In Massachusetts, we ask students to share their perceptions of the social climate through a survey called Student Views of Climate in Learning, or VOCAL, which is administered in grades four, five, eight, and ten. The first dimension of school climate measured by VOCAL is student perceptions of safety, encompassing emotional safety, physical safety, and bullying, cyberbullying. This is the area that we initially targeted for improvement. If you'll recall, we had many of these, many of these rows in the red in prior years, meaning that students were experiencing small to moderate degrees of bullying and cyberbullying within our schools as compared to the statewide average. I'm happy to say that at this time, I believe as a result of the work we've done, we're seeing moderate positive differences in both grades four and five and small positive difference in grade ten and no significant difference in grade eight, meaning that across the district bullying is, for the exception of grade eight, much less than across the state and in grade eight, no different than it is across the state. The second dimension of climate is students' perceptions of engagement, which includes cultural competence, relationships, and student participation. For grades four and five, each WRSD scores are largely in minus state averages. However, for our oldest group of students, our tenth graders, the data shows a positive result, whereas the result for the eighth grade falls below the state average. This is an improvement from last year where no grade showed a positive difference and the eighth grade showed a moderate negative difference. The main driver for the improvement in eighth grade was the relationship component of this measure. This means that eighth grade students reported having more positive relationships with their teachers last year as compared to the year before. The component that caused grade eight to come down slightly below the statewide average was student participation, which asks how much voice and choice students have in their learning activities. And a third dimension is students' perceptions of environment, which includes the instructional, mental health, and discipline environments. Results for fourth and fifth graders align the statewide average. Again, the data showed a positive result for our oldest group of surveyed students, our tenth graders. I want to call that out. This is the first time since we've been doing this report that tenth grade was above the state average in all three dimensions. The measure of instructional environment, drilling down on the fourth and eighth grade results, the measure of the instructional environment was similar to the state for both grades. Students in fifth and eighth grade had a below-average perception of the discipline environment on questions asking whether they feel they have a chance to correct their behavior or give their side of the story before being punished. And then in eighth grade, which is lower, they had a second dimension which was below, which was the mental health environment, which asks students whether they get help processing their feelings at school. So you can see the reason fifth grade was a small negative difference was because of the discipline environment. The reason that eighth grade was a large negative difference was because students had below-average perceptions on both discipline, which is again a question of fairness of discipline, and whether or not, and whether or not they have the opportunity to process their feelings at school. This slide introduces the VOCAL Average Index score results, which are student perceptions across the entire district. So that's all three measures for all four grades as compared to our DART districts. The gray line segment shows the range of scores among our DART peers and the green dot is the HW RSD score. Our goal is to have our dot at or near the top of the various ranges, which is what we see with students for disabilities and low-income students. However, other groups such as our non-disabled and non-low-income students fall at the bottom of the range for their peer districts. The result is an overall climate index score falling toward the bottom range, suggesting that further climate improvements are possible. And I would say that, you know, based on the individual results just shown, we can really identify where those would be. It really is that last dimension that has to do with the discipline environment and the mental health environment, which really comes down to student perceptions of fairness of discipline and students' perceptions of their ability to get help at school when experiencing difficult feelings. However, as compared to our other districts of the LPVAC, our school climate is extremely strong, falling at or near the top of the observed ranges for Black or African-American students, Hispanic or Latino students, and Asian students, as well as male students, students who are English learners, low-income students, and all students. One notable exception to this are multiracial students who reported low levels of school climate as compared to the multiracial students, both within the LPVAC and within the DART districts. Taken as a whole, the data shows that we have a school environment that is strong by local standards, but still has some room for improvement, particularly in terms of students' perceptions of school discipline and mental health. Moving on to student achievement. This chart shows student performance in our district as compared to our benchmark districts. Overall, this is English Language Arts three-three. Overall, we saw some nice performance gains in three to eight. I'll be talking about that in more detail later on. The percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations increased seven percent from 2024. This is enough to bring us from the bottom third of the range for most subgroups and in the aggregate in 2024 to solidly in the middle of the range for 2025, with the exception of low-income students, where our students outperformed their peers in all our comparison districts. While we still have significant achievement gaps with respect to income, our low-income students are meeting the targets to close those gaps, which is why you see them at the top of that span there. As compared to the other LPVAC districts, English Language Arts performance for most student subgroups is in the upper end of the observed range. Notable exception would be the performance of African-American or Black students. In our district, these students were the top performers in the LPVAC. It's the second year in a row that African-American or Black students in our district turned in the highest performance in the LPVAC. As you can see, forty-two percent of the students in the subgroup met or exceeded expectations in 2025. That's eight percent more than did so in 2024. This year, the state has begun reporting results not only in comparison with the previous year, but also in comparison to 2029, based on the idea that academic recovery for any district or for the state means returning to the same percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations prior to COVID. On the slide, you can see the state's recovery chart side to side by ours to repeat. There's a lot of good news for us here. First, you can see that we're outperforming the state at every grade level and in the grade band as a whole. Next, you can see that our recovery is proceeding with greater momentum. Statewide, gains for these grades last year ranged from zero percent to six percent, while for us, the improvement was from one percent to eleven percent. We saw really nice gains in grades three through six, which suggests that our ELA strategies are having a positive effect on student learning. Finally, you can see that grade five is showing a difference of zero from 2019, meaning that last year's fifth graders obtained the same achievement level as did students who were in fifth grade prior to the pandemic. That is a grade level that achieved full recovery. I'm very hopeful for this group of students as it enters the middle school and I'm hopeful for the group of third graders who will come into the testing window this year. They will be the first group of students who've had our new ELA math curriculum throughout grades K to three. So I'm hoping that we'll see a second consecutive year of strong growth in the third grade. But this year was good too. You can see it was an improvement of six percent for us as compared to an improvement of zero for the state. Moving on to math. We also saw math performance gains in the elementary and middle school grade band. In 2024, many of our student subgroups were very near the bottom of their respective ranges as compared to our benchmark districts. This year, none of our subgroups were at the bottom of their ranges or even in the bottom twenty-five percent of their ranges. As you will see when we get to the grade-by-grade results, we saw an extremely strong math achievement gain at the middle school level, which was one of the strong drivers of the math achievement gains we saw across this, across all student groups this year. As compared to the LPVAC districts, our overall performance fell mid-range for all groups and for many subgroups. The exceptions were Asian, Hispanic or Latino students and English learners, who all performed in the top end for their subgroup, and students with disabilities and low-income students, which fell in the low end of their subgroup ranges. Again, this is a marked improvement from last year when most subgroups were at the low end of their ranges as compared to the other LPVAC districts. As mentioned earlier, our greatest success story in math this year lies in the exceptional achievement gains we saw in grades six and seven. The percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in those grades increased twenty-six percent and ten percent respectively as compared to the previous year. And that compares to a one percent or two percent gain that the state saw as a whole for those grades. And fifth grade posted its fourth consecutive year of gains, becoming the first non-high school grade to have the majority of its students meeting or exceeding math expectations in the post-COVID era. Again, I would look forward to see gains in third grade next year. This is the first group of students who will have had illustrated math since kindergarten and they'll be entering the testing window. I'm also interested to see what happens at grade eight as those sixth and seventh grade students who turned in such positive results last year move up to the higher grades. Moving on to science and technology engineering, which is administered in grades five and eight. Our student subgroups were generally in the upper half of their subgroup distribution, as were students in the aggregate. Low-income students in our district came in at the very top end of the subgroup range. It's the second time I've heard that tonight. Students, low-income students are really starting to show some positive movement. Students, low-income students are really starting to show some positive movement. And students with disabilities were very close to the bottom of their subgroup range. As compared to the LPVEC districts, the picture is largely the same. And as compared to the state, you see that we continue to outperform the state averages in both grades five and eight. We did see some backtracking in grade eight last year. And looking at this, I think it's important to note that the middle school science classrooms and supply rooms were hit particularly hard by the mold issue we had last year. They had basically a complete wipeout of all their supplies. And the first several weeks, they were doing the best they could really without any materials and supplies. So I think that may have had something to do with what we saw happen there. For the first time in the history of MCAS, civics was added to the battery of assessments as an operational mandatory portion of the eighth grade assessment. So this marks the beginning of a new dataset we can track over time. My first reaction to the data was in amazement at the breadth of subgroup performance ranges in the districts. I will show you, they run from less than 10% to 100%. I think part of this comes from the fact that this is the first time the test was given. As educators receive feedback on the performance of their students, I would expect them to zero in on how to prepare students for the test, which could narrow these bands. This is another assessment where low-income students in our district came in at the top range of performance as compared to the benchmark districts. Overall, most of our students came in slightly below, slightly above the median for their subgroup. One exception, in addition to low-income students, was students with disabilities who came in near the bottom of the range. In the aggregate, our students were slightly above the group median on this assessment. And the results were similar when compared to the LPVEC districts. So now moving on to grade 10. When we get to grade 10, the analysis becomes much more complex. Statewide, we saw declines for all groups and all three high school tested subjects, and they were large declines. There are probably many causes for this, but it's important to note that this is the first round of testing under the new policy framework, where a passing score on the test is no longer required for graduation. In fact, it was well-known by students. The declines were not uniform, interestingly, across the state as a whole. Districts who started in the bottom 25% prior to the policy change had the most stability, while changes for districts in the middle 50% were quite chaotic, some of them moving down, some of them moving up. Districts in the top 25%, top 25% saw significant drops, though generally not as severe as the middle group. As you will see, in some cases, our rank rose among our peer group even though falling in comparison to the state due to all the shifting. You can see that as compared to the state, we had a larger relative drop in English Language Arts. The group least impacted were students with disabilities, who even with their four-point drop, were still performing above their pre-pandemic level. This is an important result. I think the fact that students with disabilities are leading the way on the path to academic recovery speaks to the work that's been done at the high school to provide them with access to the general education curriculum, especially through all the efforts of inclusion supports. So this is the only group, in spite of everything, in spite of the policy change, in spite of everything else that's happened. This group is performing better now than they were prior to the pandemic. It is why I say it's the students with disabilities who are going to lead the way forward at the high school. Relative to our benchmark districts, our English Language Arts percent rank increased because everyone else was seeing declines as well. Our students were the highest performers in the white, female, and non-low-income subgroups and in the aggregate, they were at the top end of the range. Two groups that underperformed were male students and multiracial students. Both groups were close to the bottom of their observed subgroup ranges. That very large gender-based difference is something that also occurred in 2022, not something we saw last year, is something, you know, I mentioned when I saw it in 2022 that just concerns me personally as someone who still identifies as an English teacher. I wonder why, why our male students are performing so much lower than their female counterparts in English. Relative to the LPVEC district, our ranking climbed even more. White students in our high schools still came in at the top of range and multiracial students did as well. Female and non-low-income students came within a percent of two of top status in the LPVEC. Both students with disabilities and non-disabled students scored well into the top end of the range, as did our students in the aggregate. So despite the raw decline in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, HWRSD significantly improved its rank relative to both its most similar districts and to its local peers, where many schools experienced a deeper and more widespread drop in ELA proficiency. There are some parallels in mathematics. Let's begin students with disabilities. In this case, they were not only the least affected, they made positive progress. They also are the only high school group last year that achieved above their pre-pandemic levels. The only group that's made a full academic recovery and is now charging forward. So again, I think this is a credit to the work the high school is doing to accelerate the performance for the student subgroup. You may recall that last year, we were the top-performing district among our peers in high school mathematics and many categories. That remains the same this year for our students in the aggregate, as well as many of our subgroups, including Hispanic or Latino students, white students, female students, non-English learners, non-low-income students, and non-disabled students. We also came in the same position relative to the LPVEC districts, which is where we're just below the top. We did have top-performing students in the Hispanic or Latino, female, and non-low-income groups. And for the first time on any of these charts, our students with disabilities were the top performers. Four years of doing this, this is the first time I've been able to show you a group where students with disabilities is at the top of the line. So again, good work being done in special education at the high school. So this is a story of continued excellence in high school mathematics. I quoted someone in my entry findings who asked the question that I've heard many times since I've been here, which is, are we number one on any list? Well, in the last two slides, you've seen 11 lists in which we're number one. And so far tonight, I've shown you 26 lists in which we're number one. And that's something that I hope you take away from the presentation. We should not let the fact that we have work to do in certain areas blind us to all the places we were achieving exempted results. Instead, we should let them point us in the direction of our next set of priorities in our cycle of continuous improvement. So looking again at the impact of attendance. Last year, we saw an even greater co-variance between attendance and achievement, with students who were not chronically absent meeting or exceeding expectations at one and a half to two and a half times the rates of students who were chronically absent. So again, attendance is just so important. It is probably the most powerful intervention we can provide. Our final data display attempts to show which student groups are under or overrepresented on any of the student success risk, student success or student risk factors we track. This is the scale, remember the risk factors are reversed for it because a higher representation of risk is a negative outcome. As compared to many previous slides, which showed student performance relative to the same subgroups in other districts, this final display shows our student performance relative to each other in our own district. And along with all the success that you've seen tonight, this shows us that we have, that we continue to experience deep and urgent equity issues within the HWRSD, particularly for students with disabilities, Hispanic or Latino students, and low-income students, who are overwhelmingly represented in disciplinary actions and significantly underrepresented in academic achievement and course rigor. But even within this, there are bright spots. As I've already noted, students with disabilities have recovered to pre-pandemic achievement levels in our high school. Our low-income students are number one among comparable districts in both science and civics. Between 2024 and 2025, the percentage of Hispanic or Latino students meeting or exceeding expectations in mathematics in grades three through eight increased from 28% to 37%. The fact that we see these gaps speaks to just how much ground some of our groups need to make up in order to achieve outcome equity. And they are making up ground. We just need to keep investing in teacher development, keep building school culture, keep making sure that students show up to school each and every day, and keep ensuring that all students have access to high-quality, standards-aligned instruction to continue closing these gaps. And if you have any questions, happy to take them.
I'm curious, how far back does this data go? I mean, they're showing us most reasons. I guess the question is, could we see this data for our eighth grade prior to the closing of the library and the overcrowding of that school, particularly in how students are feeling? The bullying, the feeling like to listen to? I would like, if there is documentable evidence that says the overcrowding of that middle school is hurting how kids feel about themselves in school. And if they don't feel good, they won't perform well.
The vocal data is available going back several years, with the exception of the COVID closure when the test is not administered and the MCAS wasn't administered because the vocal is an add-on to the MCAS. So we can take a look at that. I could definitely bring that back to a future meeting.
Tim, you can go and look at it yourself. You can go online and all the data is there and you can make any deduction that you want from there as well.
I understand, but I'm saying this in a public forum because I'd like that information to be out in the public so people can see that the overcrowding of that middle school is hurting the children in that school. Because, and it's a very difficult age to feel comfortable. Anybody who's ever been in middle school knows that. And if you've got space where kids can have an adult that they have confidence in, that they can talk to, and you need space in a building like that, and every single space in that building as I walk through it seems to be full. You know, even the storage closets are being used inappropriately because that's all the room we have. And I'm curious, and if what I think will show in that data, I think that's something the community ought to be aware of because it is an issue that needs to be dealt with.
Yep, please share that, Tim. When you, when you put that stuff together, I'd really like to see it. Thank you.
Have us a moment. Thank you. Turn your attention to what you see in the last thing in your packet. We have enrollment.
Oh, by the way, John, just kudos. Congratulations. I'm sorry if no one had said it and we were sidetracked there for a bit, but I just want to say thank you for that. Thanking to our administrators and our teachers, our educators, for the work that they have done to turn this around. I know there's, there's more coming, which we're excited about as well. And just want to appreciate, show our appreciation and say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for saying that.
I also wanted to, I also wanted to compliment you, John, and everyone else in the district. You know, as we're coming into the budget season, you know, a lot of times some of the criticism that we'll receive from various administrators we deal with is that what we get for our money to come and be getting off and that. And, you know, you keep presenting it today with, with a great example of how, you know, our, you know, there are really great results and, you know, on so many parameters, the students were performing at top level. And it's just really wonderful. And it'll be, you know, a very proud that if those kind of questions come up again this year during budget negotiations and reference down to reports like that, that, you know, we have, you know, our students are doing great and we are running the statistics and that. In the state, we're not just saying that. You know, there are real challenges we may be. So thank you so much for all the hard work, John.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
And I would also like to compliment you. And I know what they wrote in that doctoral report, but I hope they emphasize the fact that you are one good listener and you do respond to questions. I may not like the answer, but I do respect you telling the truth on issues. And it's our job to push hard in the community to correct these situations.
Thank you. So moving on to attendance or enrollment, rather, the October 1st, all-important enrollment for the district was 2,838 students. And that's my report.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Thursday, November 6th, here in the IRC at 6:30. We do have a need for executive session pursuant to master law. See chapter 30A, section 21A, free to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with HWEA or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and materials that appears. HWEA, Unit A and C, contracts, chapter, contracts. Chapter 30A, section 21A, seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, specifically master law, chapter 214, section 1B, Massachusetts Student Records Law, master law, chapter 71, section 34D, Massachusetts Students Record Regulations, 603 CMR, 23 at Secuentia, and Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERC, 20 U.S.C., section 1232G, and 34 CFR, Part 99, regarding student transfer requests. Can I get a second?
Show move.
May I have a second? I see. Thank you. So we will do roll call, move into executive session. We will not be returning from executive session and we will be adjourning from there. Roll call, Sheryl? Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Hi.
Mike? Myself, I, now adjourning from regular session, 7:55 PM. Thank you.